Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back. This is the regular meeting of council for the Township of Tiny for October 29, 2025. We began the meeting at 12:30 today with some confidential closed session items, and now we move back into our open session. As part of the protocol, we'll now rise and report at 2:12 PM. Moved by Deputy Mayor, thank you, and Councillor Womack. Those in favor, thank you very much. Carried unanimously. Couple of motions coming out of our meeting. The first one is, where has council held a discussion regarding a complaint to the integrity commissioner? Thou therefore be it resolved that the members of council proceed with submission of a joint complaint. Moved by Councillor Womack. Seconded, Deputy Mayor, thank you. Those in favor? Those opposed?
I'd like to declare-
Oh, sorry. Have a question or comment? Sure, please.
Declare conflict of interest for that one.
Declare conflict of interest. Thank you, Councillor Burdell. Appreciate that. Clerk will give you the forms for that. So, again, any comments, questions? Thank you. Those in favor? Those opposed? And we have one conflict of interest. Thank you. Second item, where has council considered a verbal report from Holly Bryce, agent of record regarding a review of the agreement of purchase and sale? Thou therefore be it resolved that staff and Holly Bryce proceed as directed. Can I have a mover and a seconder for this, please? Thank you. Councillor Burdell?
I have a question, Your Worship.
Okay, yeah, we have time for questions. Yeah, we- please go ahead. And Councillor Womack. Yep.
It just says Holly O'Shea as the agent of record. I would just like a clarification.
I'm not sure. Holly Shea?
It is Holly Bryce.
Holly Bryce?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Confirming that. Any comments, questions? Those in favor? Thank you. Motion's carried. Okay, moving on to our moment of silent reflection. Land acknowledgement statement, if you could join me in standing in a moment of silent reflection. As you can see today, we're wearing our poppies in honor of Remembrance Day on November 11th. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Okay, our land acknowledgements today has been requested by Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. The Township of Tiny acknowledges that we are situated on what was once the traditional land of the Huron-Wendat Nation and the Anishnabi people. La canton de Tiny reconnaît que nous sommes situés sur ce qui était jeudi la terre truite traditionnelle de la nation Huron-Wendat et le peuple Anishnaba. The township of Tiny has been and will continue to be an important homeland and gathering place for indigenous peoples and Métis citizens. Altogether, we are the stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters, and we are to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. La canton de Tiny était continue à être une patrie et une lie de raison importante pour les peuples autochtones et le citier Métis. Ensemble, nous sommes les intendants et gardiens de ces terres et des eaux, et nous devons maintenir cette responsabilité afin d'assurer la santé et l'intégrité pour les générations à venir.
Well done, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. Okay, moving on to announcements. Fair number today, which is great to see. I'll kick it off with item H1, which is Township of Tiny Citizen Awards. We're looking for nominations, as I mentioned before, for worthy recipients in the community and for people that have made our community better. So, the nomination period is open until January 5th of 2026. Item two is Senior Speaker Series, and I know Councillor Holoka has a couple other items he'd like to talk to, so please, sir, take her away.
Thank you, Your Worship. Regarding the Senior Speaker Series, we've already run three of them. We have two more to go. One is tomorrow. It's on Active Living for Life, and it starts at 9:30 at the Township of Tiny Community Centre. The following week, on November 6th, our deputy chief will be presenting emergency preparedness for seniors, and that's going to occur again next Thursday on November 6th at 2025, also at the Township of Tiny Community Centre, starting at 9:30 AM. We recently ran a program through the Senior Advisory Committee called Ducks in a Row. It was put on by Kim Maticu, and Don Chapman, prior to his resignation, had gone through the process of becoming accredited with delivering this program. It was sold out. We plan on running another one in the late spring of 2026. There were lots of praise and support for championing these topics and sessions. It's about wills and getting ready for your next life and not leaving your loved ones or relatives in the lurch, not knowing where anything is. So, it's an excellent program. We got great feedback, and, like I said, there were lots of praise and support from the attendees. So, I would recommend that if you're interested in the fall or in the spring, that you sign up early because this is going to sell out fast again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Holoka, and, yeah, great job, and thanks to Kim and her staff for putting that on. I got some really good feedback on that, and the numbers were actually a little lower than, I believe it was 50 in the session?
Yeah.
And that rea- and the reason why was that it's, as you mentioned, it's interactive, and it's also personal, personally interactive. So, you get a binder, you work your way through it, so you leave with something tangible that you didn't have when you first came in. So, I think that's a great program, that people can bring their information and pull all that together, and I'm sure that we could probably run that three, four times a year without any concerns at all. So, thank you very much. Moving on to, we have some announcement. Parks and Recreation and Special Events is running first ever Halloween celebration on November 1st, 2025, at our Tiny Township, Township of Tiny Community Centre on Concession 8. The Pumpkin Trail Event begins at 6:00 PM, and Movie Night with the Addams Family is at the same location at 7:30 PM. So, Director Palace, if there's anything I didn't add or include in that, please feel free, and any other items you may have ongoing at the time.
Absolutely. Through you, Chair. We just dropped off all the pumpkins to St. Qua and Wyville Public School the other day, about 90 pumpkins for each of the schools. So, lots of kids with smiling faces coming out to the truck to pick those up, so we're picking those back up, all carved on Friday, and they will be highlighted in our Pumpkin Trail Event. We also encourage the community to drop their pumpkins off at one of three locations, so if they have pumpkins they want featured on the trail as well, they can drop them off in La Fontaine before 3:00 PM on Saturday, in Wybridge before 3:00 PM on Saturday, or at the TTC, right at our event location. Staff will be around to pick those up and make sure they're lit up as part of the trail. We do have some concessions as part of the movie, so bring some tunis for popcorn, or we'll have hot dogs on site, that kind of thing, so you can have some refreshments and snacks while you're enjoying the Addams Family. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Palace. Appreciate that, and thank you. Call it to the public that have donated, I think, largely a lot of those pumpkins as well, so that's great. On November 25th, 2025, we will be having a public information center with regards to Farlane Lake drainage public information. So, this will be an in-person and hybrid meeting as well, so people that are not in the area can participate and submit questions too, if they like, in either format. So, we look forward to having members of the public. Director Leach will be there. I will be there, and getting some, getting some information on where we go forward with the ongoing Farlane Lake issues. So, look forward to that. Tree lighting ceremony, really excited about this. We changed the date. It's Friday, December 5th, 2025. It'll take place from 5 till 6:00 PM in Perkinsfield Park, and I won't bust the surprise, but I know that we have some added lighting opportunities, and we're looking forward to seeing those on February, December 5th. As well, on December 6th is the Wyville Christmas Parade, taking place in, obviously, in Wyville, so we look forward to everybody participating in that. I know the setup location is a little different. They're going to lay it out, kind of like Midland does, where you have a location on the street and make it a little up, rather than jamming our fire hall, which was getting a little packed, so we're looking forward to that on December 6th, and that will start at, I believe it's 5 o'clock as well, sorry, 6 o'clock as well. Director Palace, I know I'll go back to you in terms of, we had a pickleball community engagement session, and just a bit of an update in terms of the feedback that you've received.
Yep, absolutely. Through you, Mayor Evans. So, on, sorry, which day was it there? About a week ago now, sorry about that. We hosted an open house for our pickleball participants here in town. We had about 40 people come to the open house, and they engaged in a focus group session that we laid out about five different questions to them, and gathered feedback from the participants. We also had about 156 respondents to our online survey. Wasaga Beach Pickleball Club did come to that event and did a bit of an introduction on what it looks like to start a pickleball club up, and gave their history as far as where they started and now where they are with 350 members plus and being incorporated, and what that looks like and the processes involved to get there. On the survey, we do have about 63% of respondents in favor of hosting or starting a pickleball club in Tiny. That same notion was not exactly reflected in the consultation session, but we're going to combine those results and bring those forward to council, probably at the next council meeting. We'll have a summary of the survey and the public engagement session for us to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Palace. Moving on, Director Leach, we have a section here for an update on the new Tiny Township Administrative Centre.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the site, as you can see, we're continuing on. The crusher runs all been brought onto the site for the new pad. As you can see, also, the temporary construction road is in place and the access off of Concession 9, along with the mud mat to ensure that we minimize any trafficking of mud onto the road. We've also completed the rapid compaction, which is a process to compact the crusher run that we put in place. It saved some money and it prevented a lot of engineer fill coming into the site, so it was a pretty innovative way of getting that foundation for the building, which is just all on one level, basically slab-on-grade. The next steps that we'll be looking for will be the foundation, pouring of the foundation. So, we're just working through the approvals of the permits for that, and so we should be on track for the end of the month, start of December. The majority of the material's been removed from the site, from our grubbing and grubbing activity, although we've maintained what we need on the site to finish up the groundwork. The ad hoc committee is moving forward, and I just want to assure the public that these are public meetings, are public minutes, but for the committee's benefit, that anything is being brought forward, and if it's being brought forward, it doesn't mean that's what we're doing. So, I just want to rest assured of the public, because I have seen out there with lists of some stuff that they're saying that are going to come in here, but these are just what the committee's putting stuff on the table, and then obviously, everything needs to be approved as we moved on, so worry not. If you see some items on there you don't think are appropriate for the town hall, these are things that we'll be vetting and going through it. So, these are just ideas, and that's how you develop these committees, is you start with good ideas, and then you whittle down to the ones that you actually want to put in place. We're actually now on the interior, looking at specific finishes and the different millworks within it, so that's something that we've been working diligently on for the last few weeks, and we'll continue making sure that that's in line with the build. The parking area is getting just developed, and one of the main themes is cost savings. With every single meeting we're in and every idea we have, we always look for the cost-saving opportunities. And also, just for a reminder so everybody is aware from the public standpoint, all of the reports, everything, all the studies that we've done are all online, and you can review them, just to show that the process that we did follow, we are following all the requirements that are in place, and so for your own benefit, I encourage the public to read these reports and understand what we've actually done up there, so that you can get the facts straight by reading it right to where the reports are. So, other than that, I think we're moving forward well on it, and I'll continue to provide these updates every three weeks to council.
Thank you, Director Leach. Councillor Holoka.
Yes, Director, I just wanted to ask you if we've come up with a date for the next meeting for the ad hoc committee on the Tiny Township Administrative Centre?
I don't have the date, but it's every month. Our last one was on the 26th, so it'll be near the end of November, but it's on our community calendar for anybody that checked the actual dates. Sorry, I don't have that date actually in front of me.
Yeah, that's okay. I've just gone through the calendar, and it's not there, so maybe we could just ensure that it's posted.
We can follow up. I know that our administrative assistant's on holidays right now, but certainly by Monday, I'm sure we have a meeting of the TTA C Committee, and we'll make sure that it's updated then.
Chair, I can advise that we have, through the meeting, it is on the 20th of November.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, we'll make sure that the calendar is updated to reflect.
All right.
Thank you.
November 20th for the next ad hoc.
Oh, it is?
Wow, that's fast. Okay, good. Any other questions for Director Leach? Then move on to council announcements. Park, and I'll start with Councillor Burdell.
We thank you, Chair. On October 18th and 19th, I attended the Second Annual Healthy Democracy Forum, hosted by the Association of Municipalities of Ontario and downtown Toronto. The 2025 forum focused on two initiatives underway to support AMO's members in the lead-up to the 2026 municipal elections and beyond. Day one, we learned about strategies to encourage and increase voter turnout, candidate attraction, and retention. Day two, we dealt with the growing incivility, harassment, and threatening behavior in Ontario municipalities. It was well worth the time to engage with AMO members from across the province, and I look forward to future forums to address ways of improving democracy in Ontario. Second announcement I'd like to make is November 11th is Remembrance Day in Canada, also known as Armistice Day and Poppy Day around the world. It's our annual reminder of significant sacrifices made in the past that have led to current freedoms. It's observed on this day to commemorate the end of World War I, which officially took place on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918. This year also marks the 102nd anniversary of the Poppy Campaign, organized by the Royal Canadian Legion, which, with proceeds from poppy sales, helping to support veterans and their families. To quote Canadian writer Douglas Phillips, quote, "Remembrance Day is when the country stops for two minutes, two minutes of silence, to pay respects to those who gave their lives and our veterans who fought for our freedom", end quote. It's also a way to show our appreciation for those who are currently serving in the Canadian Armed Forces, that are standing on guard and ready to fight, so that we can continue to enjoy our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Burdell. Any announcements, council? Final Councillor Holoka?
Just to remind everybody to watch the Blue Jays. They're on a roll, and I think they have a secret mission to accomplish, so go Blue Jays, go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Holoka, and you had an opportunity to wear your shirt today, so I'd like to see that. That's great. Okay, anything else before we move on? Not seeing anything. Moving into our public comment period. Is there anybody in here would like to make a comment this time? I know we do have one person online, so then we can go to that person online now, if they're available.
Yeah, I can make comments.
It's up to you. If you want to, where are you, Tina? Are you?
I just wondered then, what was my question?
Sorry, it's just three minutes, so thanks. That'd be great, yeah. Won't take too long.
Can you hear me and see me okay?
Good afternoon, sir. Yes, Pasquali, I can see you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for joining us.
I guess I can start, I can go directly into my-
The floor is yours, sir. Yes, it's all yours. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, good afternoon. Good afternoon to all, to Mayor and to all. My name is Pasquali Zida. Thank you for your leadership and for passing a resolution that reflects precaution and transparency principles vital to protecting Georgian Bay and central to save Georgian Bay's mission. I strongly support your resolution and want to raise concerns about the undisclosed aspects of the TC Energy Pump Storage Project, revealed through recent Department of National Defense Freedom of Information requests and TC Energy's own statements. These disclosures expose major gaps in public understanding of the project's scope and environmental impact. PFAS and other forever chemicals are present on the proposed site. No publicly-available cleanup or contamination plan exists. The project's footprint extends far beyond the reservoir, including subway-sized tunnels beneath the lake bed, staging areas for equipment, relocation of military infrastructure, and a massive underground powerhouse buried in the escarpment, not in the bay, with a 50-meter-high ceiling, 200 meters long, and 30 meters wide. The relocation of military buildings was disclosed through a Freedom of Information request, yet TC Energy has not addressed it publicly. This omission undermines environmental planning and public trust. The site lies within a UNESCO Biosphere Reserve, home to over 35 species at risk, including the tri-color bat, butternut tree, and western chorus frog. Evacuation would destroy irreplaceable habitat and cause irreversible ecological loss. TC Energy narrowly defines the cleanup zone as the reservoir site, claiming it's less contaminated. This ignores contamination in the bay where water inlets will be placed and along the tunnel corridor. By limiting the cleanup zone, TC Energy sidesteps responsibility for the broader environmental footprint. There's also a human cost. The proposed reservoir site is less than one kilometer from homes and farms. It sits above an established residential and seasonal community of over 300 families, homes, and farms. Some homes lie directly below the escarpment, just 200 vertical feet from the crest. These residents would be, would live beneath a six-story-high dam holding a back, a reservoir nearly twice the size of Lake Louise, and many will be unable to obtain insurance due to proximity and risk posed by the reservoir. I respectfully urge council to amend the motion to clearly oppose this project, not just consult. The risks to our environment, community, and future are too great to ignore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zida. Thanks for participating. Councillor, any comments or questions? Councillor Holoka?
Yes, thank you for bringing that insurance question to the forefront. It's something that we had not considered. My biggest concern is the little fish that will be scooped up through the intake valves and possibly destroy all types of fish species for decades to come. But thank you for your efforts, and you have my 100% support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments, questions? Mr. Zida, thank you so much for participating today, and good luck in your endeavors, and I appreciate your support. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted maybe to respond, if I can, if I have a little bit of time, but yes, the inlets will be located right by the whitefish spawning area. In fact, the tunnels will be right underneath it, and it's, yeah, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. No, our pleasure. Thank you. Okay, have a great day.
Okay.
Bye now. Okay, sir, if you like, come on up, sign your name and address, and the topic today is something pertaining to this agenda on the regular county council meeting, just so you know. Okay, great. Okay, great.
Did I turn that on? Brandon Franzen, I'm a local resident. Thanks for having me. In the minutes that I kind of went over and seen that came out online that Mr. Leach was talking about, due to some of the things that you got, that were on there that might go into the building, might not go into your building, I guess what I came to the conclusion was after I had read some of that, it's a little misleading, and then going into the floor plan, or if it's a proposed floor plan, the sheer size of this building is a little alarming from somebody that comes from a trades perspective. Not necessarily as a whole, just some of the layout in the sense of like the CAO office, the mayor's office, some of the, like the council chambers, like we're on an average day today, there's not that many people. I don't think our population's going to grow to like 60,000 people in the next 20 years. I hope not, for sure. But what I just want to bring to attention is just the sheer size of this project and the management of the floor plan. And what it does is it's just a little alarming. I get that we, you know, the new, a new building, sure, cool, but when we're going to waste space, that's my concern. In the construction industry, I probably painted some of the nicest houses on this bay and there's, I look at it like, wow, that's a waste of space, you know? And I can tell you from experience, it never gets used. So for me, just what I would like to present is that, you know, the floor plan be very, people be mindful of this and maybe, you know, you could rent more space out to make your town, our township back some money. Instead of, you know, having all these offices that are unused, we could have spaces where the township could bring money back in and help offset the cost of the build. So that's pretty much all I got to say on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate that. Actually, if you want, maybe some comments on your discussion, thanks for coming in. Appreciate that. Councilor Womack?
Thank you, Worship Three. Appreciate you coming in, sharing some of your concerns. High level, these, because we're not going to be able to get into nitty-gritty details in a council meeting. If you wanted to sit down in the office, we could go over your concerns, we could potentially share how we got there as well. This facility, so this one plus our three portables out back, plus the space at the fire hall, plus the space at the water building, it all turns into about 19,000 square feet. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but when you look at the build and what we're doing, so we have 19,000 square feet now, and we're going to be moving to approximately 22,000 square feet of office space. So that plans for 60 years of growth within the municipality. The other space is your council chambers and a rental facility, which is an upgraded public space from what we currently have. So, you're right, there's definitely some, if you're talking about the rental space or the lobby, these were public additions kind of thing for weddings, whatever the case may be. As far as council chambers go, you're right, this is an average day, but you have to plan for not the average day. And I've been doing this for 11 years now and there's always a controversial item that comes up. Sunday gun hunting, for instance, was one. We used to prohibit gun hunting on Sundays, and we had the parking lot completely full. People couldn't get in to voice their opinions, concerns, which is an issue. So we're trying to accommodate those kind of situations as well. Again, wanted to say thank you for your comments, and if you do want to sit down and go over things in detail, happy to do so.
Any other comments, council? Mr. Franzen, thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Any other comments? Okay, good enough. Director Palace, thanks, yeah, if you could just turn that off. We don't have any deputations to counsel today. We do not have any reports of consultants or third parties. Moving on to adopting, receiving of minutes of previous meetings, excuse me, fair number today, so we'll kick off discussion on these. Are there any in council, any of these items you'd like to pull for discussion or? No, not seeing any? Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor. Seconded by Counselor Holka. The motion is that items under Section L1, minutes of council, advisory committees and other meetings be adopted as distributed. Are there any other comments, questions before we go to the vote? All those in favour? Thank you very much. Moving on to item L2, which is minutes of closed session committee of the whole council meetings. We have two under consideration today, August 11th, 2025, closed session committee of adjustment, and October 8th, 2025, closed session committee of the whole. A mover and a seconder, please. Thank you, Counselor Bernal. Seconded by Counselor Womack. Discussion on these items, council? Seeing none, motion is that the following minutes be adopted as distributed, August 11th, 2025, closed session committee of adjustment, and October 8th, 2025, closed session committee of the whole. All those in favour? Thank you very much. And moving on to item L3, which is committee of the whole reports for October 8th, 2025. A mover and a seconder for discussion? Thank you, Deputy Counselor Holka. Deputy Mayor, misconstrues. Are there any items for consideration or discussion, council? Counselor Bernal, please.
Great, thank you. I'd like to talk about F.2 TC Energy Storage Project. So the, I introduced the motion at the last committee of the whole regarding the proposed TC project in Meaford, which was replaced by a second motion. After carefully studying the second motion, I'm afraid the original motion lost its original intent of expressing our opposition to the project and the reasons why. So therefore, I'd like to amend the second motion, and I'd like to get some direction from the clerk. Do I reread the whole motion, the second motion with the amendments? Is that what I should do at this time?
Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I think for clarity, you can speak to what your amendments are, and then the motion will be read in its entirety when it's moved and seconded to be voted on.
Great, thank you very much. So what I'd like to add is in the first part, during the whereas, so and whereas the independent electricity systems operator, the IESO, has twice recommended to the Ministry of Energy, the MOE, that this pumped storage project would not reduce electricity costs and have no economic value to Ontario taxpayers. And whereas the IESO has authorised newer, more efficient and less environmentally invasive technologies such as long-duration battery storage, as they not only take less property and time to build, they can be built at more locations closer to higher-demand markets, reducing the need for long transmission corridors. And whereas the Department of Defence has warned of toxic contamination of Georgian Bay when soil on 4th Canadian Division Training Centers is disturbed by construction. And whereas some 30 endangered species will be put at risk. And whereas the Niagara Escarpment is a UNESCO designated geological formation deserving of protection. One more slight addition would be on, now therefore be it resolved that the tiny council emphasises the following principles. Number one, environmental stewardship. The township of Tiny is deeply concerned about potential, and I'd like to add here irreversible impacts. So the word irreversible, I'd like to add that there. And the last thing that I would like to remove is in the paragraph that states, and that council reaffirms its commitment to representing the interests of our residents and protecting the natural heritage of Georgian Bay, and stands ready to engage constructively with, I'd like to remove TC Energy, the municipality of Meaford, and, so for it to disread, and stands ready to engage constructively with provincial authorities to ensure that energy development in our region proceeds responsibly and sustainably. Those are the amendments.
Okay, thanks Counselor Bernal. Start with Counselor Holka, then Counselor Womack.
Yes, I'm in line with a lot of what you said, but I think also because it is a former military base, that the Department of National Defence and the federal government also be included so that we can find out exactly how, if and what they're going to clean up. Thank you.
Counselor Womack?
To be clear, again, we are not an actual real player at this table. This is a piece of paper that someone is maybe going to read once and discard. I, however, do agree 100% with the content. I think we need a precautionary approach to something like this. My concern is that when you thump the drum, we don't want this. It removes all credibility from us as a body. I, so I agree that the way that things are outlined is just completely too risky to proceed with, but I don't want to remove us as a player from the table. And I link this back to when we had these big discussions about the Teeden pit. We could have just said, no, and we would have had no credibility at the table, we would have gone to the OLT and lost. Instead, we came back with real recommendations, we worked with Teeden, or the, what is it, Dufferin Aggregates, and we changed, we changed the way they operated to better things for the residents. So for me, I absolutely think TC Energy should be, we're talking about constructively, we're engaging all parties. So to me, those things stay in. They're the ones that are pushing this forward, so is the municipality of Meaford. Why don't we want to engage them? That doesn't make sense to me. I would leave those in. Counselor Holka, absolutely. If you want to be, open the invite to Department of National Defence and the feds, I can see that. I don't, I don't want to take the rah-rah, not in my backyard stance. I want to take the, let's do the, if this is going to happen, if it's going to be forced upon us, because we are not the authority having jurisdiction, that we keep ourselves as a legitimate player. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Womack. Counselor? I'll just throw my two, I don't have any, the first, I believe there were two, I'm not having the motion in front, I think largely with your first two areas, I'm largely in agreement with, in terms of augmenting the language, I don't have any. But as far as the second last paragraph, the one that you took out, TC Energy and municipality of Meaford, I'm just echoing the same thing, basically that Counselor Womack did in that, you know, we're not a signatory to this, so the best thing we can do is try and garner public opinion and participation and inclusion. And I, the one thing I always worry about when we say we're going to oppose everything is to give people the impression that we can, or we will, or it's a decision that we have control over. So I don't agree with taking out TC Energy, the municipality of Meaford. I'll stand open to talk to anybody about it that could help make sure, allay all the concerns, be they environmental, economic, everything that goes with it, so that we can actually get ourselves as a participatory member of this discussion, because currently we are not. So anything I can do to that. And I don't think, Counselor Bernal, really changes, you know, honestly, taking them out and saying we don't like you, to me is, you know, it's, sorry, it's cutting your nose out of spite your face in the sense of that, why would you, why would you do something for no real big, you know, gain on it? But I'm open to the other ones in terms of augmenting the existing language. I know it was a fairly long, Deputy Mayor will test, fairly long motion, but it was something that I worked on a lot, and I will note, it was carried 5-0, so it's, I think we're all on the same page here, and if it's something that we can update to your, as part of some of the amendments you have there, I'd be fine with that as long as it doesn't touch paragraph three. So, sorry, Deputy Mayor, and then Counselor Bernal.
Thanks for your worship. You know, I'm against this project all, since the first time they came in here when they couldn't answer some basic questions. Yes, we can sit here, we can wordsmith all we want, this motion, but as Counselor Womack put up, we want to at least have an opportunity to be able to sit at the table and try to provide some influence around decisions going forward. And if we, and we had this conversation, you know, three weeks ago, around how strongly of a worded letter do we want, and do we want to remove ourselves from it completely by putting a strong stance? Right now, the door's open. I think anybody with any sort of sense understands this council is vehemently opposed to this project. It stands within the motion as it reads right now. You know, if we want to wordsmith some things, it's, you know, I'm indifferent to it. I think this is a well-worded letter. We actually had somebody do a deputation on it today. I think that the notice has gotten out there to the community, you know, whether it be in Tiny or surrounding areas in our communities. At the end of the day, I think this does what it needs to do, but I want to have that opportunity if it's, if we are so granted, and, you know, as Mayor Evans said, it's not likely that we have any choice in this, it's going to happen. But the more that we can get our message out there, as this stands in voting on this, obviously goes out to all the parties that we identified, all it does now is delay it for another cycle or two. And I'd rather this message get out to all those parties before it's too late. Thank you.
Counselor Bernal?
Yeah, a couple of things. That's why we have the process of the committee of the whole and regular council meetings, so that what happens at committee of the whole, we ratify three weeks later, so if we have a change of heart or a reason, other study and dialogue with other members of the public, that's why we come and pull the items so that we can discuss, and I don't see a problem with that process. As what was said earlier, we're not a player at the table and not signatories, so that's the reason why I want to remove the TC Energy and the municipality of Meaford from this motion, because we are not players at the table. But saying that, but we do stand ready to engage constructively with provincial authorities to ensure that energy development in our region proceeds responsibly and sustainably. So we're not removing ourselves, we're not, we're not saying that we don't like TC Energy and municipality of Meaford, so that's why we're removing the name, that's not what this is all about. Which was clearly stated that twice, that we're not a player at the table on this particular project, but also showing that there are other methods to store batteries that are less intrusive and costly than this one, and that's why I add that in. So I just want to just send this to the appropriate, forward to all the municipalities in Georgian Bay, and DND is one of them, to show that we do oppose to this, but we are ready to speak with provincial authorities, because we are not a player at the table. Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the original motion. The recommendations contain that committee of the whole report of October 8th, 2025, it can be either formally approved and adopted, or formally approved and adopted, with the exception of the following items. So is member of council that would like to exclude one of these items, and I believe Counselor Bernal, the one we've been discussing is item F2, just so we're...
So we're voting on the balance, sir?
No, no, we're not voting, and somebody has to actually make a motion or indication that they want to exclude something from this motion. So we've not, nobody has done that to this point yet. So we're still, right now, we're looking at formally approved and adopted, so. Counselor Bernal?
So I'm proposing that we add and exclude some of the items, some items on the motion, on the second motion that was presented at committee of the whole.
So you're pulling the TC Energy?
So you're pulling the item F2?
That's what I, yes.
Okay, so the recommendation for this will do two. The recommendation is contained in the committee of the whole report of October 8, 2025, be, as voted upon, be formally approved and adopted, with the exception of item F2, which will be considered separately. All those in favor? Thank you, it's carried. Moved by Councillor Holka, seconded by Councillor Miskinnes, yes. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Miskinnes. Lord of all, okay, so, Councillor Burnell, please, please move forward on item F2.
So at this time, if I can get direction from the clerk, if, if I may, so I'm just going to read the motion as, that I'd like to see amended? Is that what I'm doing right now?
Yes, we'd like to know what your motion is.
So to clarify, I think Councillor Burnell did propose the changes, so at this point, if you'll consider that he's put the motion forward, you'll, you'll want to determine if there's a second ear for the motion as it stands, or if not, or Councillor Burnell, if you want to consider the friendly amendment, which was to reinstate, working with TC Energy and the municipality of Meaford, and then vote on it at that time.
Okay, that's up to Councillor Burnell to decide if he wants to accept the friendly amendment or not.
No, I'd like to remove the TC Energy and municipality of Meaford in the second motion that was presented, committee of the whole, and add the ones that I talked about.
Okay.
So, because I feel that is a friendly motion, amendment to the motion now.
Do we need, do we have a second ear? Councillor Walma?
I'm happy to second the motion, but I still would, I actually would like to hear it in its entirety if we're going to be voting on it, your worship.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Deputy Mayor's getting back at me.
That's right. Want some water first?
Okay, so we're moved by Councillor Burnell, and seconded by Councillor Walma. And this is the proposed amended motion. Whereas the township of Tiny recognizes the importance of developing reliable and sustainable energy infrastructure for the province of Ontario, and acknowledges that energy projects of this scale may have significant environmental, economic, and social implications for our region, particularly for Georgian Bay and surrounding ecosystems. And whereas the proposed TC Energy Ontario Pump Storage Project is located within the municipality of Meaford, the township of Tiny is committed to ensuring that the interests of our residents and the health of Georgian Bay are fully considered. And whereas the independent electrical system operator, also known as IESO, is twice recommended to the Ministry of Energy, MOE, that this pump storage project would not reduce electricity costs and have no economic value to Ontario ratepayers. And whereas the IESO has authorized newer, more efficient, and less environmentally invasive technologies such as long-duration battery storage, as they not only take less property and time to build, they can be built at more locations closer to high-demand markets, reducing the need for long transmission corridors. And whereas the Department of Defence has warned of toxic contamination of Georgian Bay when soil on the Fourth Canadian Division Training Centers is disturbed by construction, and whereas some 30 endangered species will be put at risk should the project proceed, and whereas the Niagara Skartman is a UNESCO-designated geological formation deserving of protection, now therefore be resolved, the township, Tiny Township, Township of Tiny Council emphasizes the following principles. One, environmental stewardship. The township of Tiny is deeply concerned about the potential irreversible impacts on aquatic ecosystems, water quality, and species at risk in Georgian Bay. Any project of this magnitude must meet the highest standards of environmental assessment and protection. Two, transparent governance and consultation. We call for full transparency in the project approval process, including open communication with neighboring municipalities and local stakeholders. Public consultation and meaningful engagement with communities in the Georgian Bay region are essential. Three, regional collaboration. The township of Tiny encourages collaboration between municipalities, provincial authorities, and indigenous partners to ensure that any energy project reflects regional priorities, including environmental protection, economic sustainability, and community well-being. Four, precautionary approach. Given the uncertainties of potential ecological risks, the township of Tiny advocates for precautionary approach. We support comprehensive and independent studies and a thorough review process before any approvals or construction activities proceed. And the council reaffirms its commitment to representing the interests of our residents and protecting the national heritage of Georgian Bay, and stands ready to engage constructively with provincial authorities to ensure that energy development in our region proceeds responsibly and sustainably, and that this resolution be forwarded to all municipalities in the Georgian Bay basin, the IESO, DND, Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, Ministry of Natural Resorts and Forestry, Ministry of Fisheries and Oceans, Simcoe North Member of Parliament, Simcoe North Member of Provincial Parliament, Canadian Coast Guard, the Great Lakes St Lawrence Cities Initiative, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, to request their cooperation in preventing this project from proceeding. And that the correspondence from SSEA, Severnstown Environmental Association, dated September 9, 2025, regarding the TC Energy Pump Storage Proposal be included in the submission. Questions, comments, council? Councillor Holka?
So basically, what Councillor Burnell is asking is that we remove the township of Meaford and TC Energy from, from this resolution, right? From this motion?
There are other, I'll refer to, Councillor Burnell, he's more intimate with all the changes, so I'll, sir, if you could go through me and answer those questions, just for clarity.
Great, thank you. Yes, that's it, for that, for the removal of the second motion that was presented, committee of the whole, three weeks ago.
And just follow up, your worship?
Yep.
And the purpose of that being that you don't want them to know how we feel?
Through, through myself, to you, Councillor Burnell?
Great, if we want to include them in the, that we forward this motion to them, so that they can be informed of our, of our decision, or what we've discussed in, in our, in our motion here, if we can, we can include them to receive this, so that they are current on what's going on, from township of Tiny, someone who's not a player at the table, and so be it, yes.
Councillor Holka, anything further?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, you know, wondering why we're going through all this just to exclude the township of Meaford and TC Energy, the two main players so far. If we're going to carbon copy them on this motion, we might as well include them, is my thinking. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks through you, your worship. I can't agree with removing the TC Energy and municipality of Meaford. This basically gives them a hall pass, saying they don't need to engage with communities that share a bay with them. They need to be engaging with all communities that share this, this lake bed and these waters. So, no, I, we absolutely want to make sure, in my opinion, to engage with the communities. And this just, removing them says we don't even want to talk to you anymore, and they're not to, to open the door to talk to us at all. So I can't stand with this, I prefer the, the original. And it's, to me, it's not semantics at this point. Removing them is a, is a very deliberate shot, and basically gives them a hall pass, so, no.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Walma?
Thank you, worship. I also believe there was the addition of the economic impact, as well as the, the battery storage, which is separate from our motion, and that's an addition, and I'm looking at Councillor Burnell. Honestly, one of the things that I liked about our motion originally is that it was, it was ours. We created it, we created it from engaging with our environmental association, get their concerns, and we expanded on that from the municipality's perspective. I have no idea if batteries are cheaper, and I, when you incorporate mining space to get the materials, I mean, this is, that's a huge discussion, and, I mean, I know we're getting into the semantics piece, but it was clean, it was cut, and it is an oppositional letter, it's very clear. So I am not supportive of the changes. Thank you.
Anything else, Councillor Walma? Councillor Burnell, please.
So I'm prepared to do the friendly amendment, to, to not eliminate, not remove the TC Energy and the municipality of Meaford from the second motion, but I'd like to include the items that I, that, so that we show why we are in opposition of the project. I've done quite a bit of studying, and I added myself these five additions, myself, and learned a lot about the difference between a pump storage project and a long-duration battery storage, which the IESO has approved eight of them, the long-duration battery storage. They don't, they don't want the, a pump storage system, they want, and they've already, like I said, endorsed long-duration battery storage. So I've done my homework, I've done, and I've come up with these five additions myself. Thank you. I'd like to include them.
Councillor Walma?
I'm fine with the councillor's amendments, if he's willing to keep the context. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, council? I have an amendment that I'd like council to consider as well. First of all, I think the original motion is, is more succinct and frankly, much better written, but that's another part, but the overriding goal here is obviously that we want to be a part of this process. We may not be in favor of it, obviously, but we want to be a part of that, and I think that by including Councillor Burnell's research is something that we should include. Sorry, Madam Clerk, but my friendly amendment would be to include, and this is what I was remiss in terms of when I first wrote this, the Soggy and Ajibwe Nation, we didn't include them. And I would like to add that, and Councillor Burnell, I think that's a pretty minor addition, but an important one, that I, I am remiss that I did not include them under the TC Energy and the town of Meaford. So I would like to add that, if, if you're amenable?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Madam Clerk?
Through the chair, is that intended to be with the third last paragraph, to engage constructively with TC Energy, municipality of Meaford, and the Soggy Ajibwe Nation? Or is it to be in the second last paragraph, where the resolution is forwarded to them for information?
My intent was the, sorry, I'm looking on Councillor Burnell's amendment, it's the third last paragraph. On the original, it's the second last, but, and let me just, I believe it hasn't changed it. And that the council reaffirms commitment to representing the interests of residents and protecting natural heritage of Georgian Bay, stands ready to engage constructively with TC Energy, municipality of Meaford, then I would include Soggy and Ajibwe Nation and provincial authorities to ensure that energy development in our region proceeds responsibly and sustainably. Councillor Burnell, is that the right intent?
No, the, I believe there are two First Nations that are involved with this project. So I, I would just like to, I would like to just include it in the second last paragraph, so that we're pretty clear about the, the main players are going to be TC Energy and municipality of Meaford, and then there's, there's all these other people that should be part of the discussion, and Soggy Nation should be one of them.
I don't accept that, because Soggy, if there are multiple indigenous communities there, then maybe we could, for the purpose of the motion, include them, but that they own the land and govern the land, they, they stand equal to me in terms of town of Meaford. So maybe, I appreciate that there's more than one, if there is, maybe we could use a blanket. Sorry, we don't know exactly which, which nations they are, but indigenous nations in the area, perhaps, or something to that is, my, my point is, I don't want anybody to feel excluded, and given that they own land, that's going to be potentially used in this development, they should be afforded the same level of consideration.
Put them in both?
Put them in both, yeah, if we know what they are, then we can put them in. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, through you, yeah, based on truth and reconciliation commission, there were 94 calls to action. We would be remiss if we didn't include them as a player at the table, and in order to honor that commitment, I think we absolutely need to include them in that second paragraph on the new motion, or the third paragraph on the old motion. I think that needs to be, they need to be included with the town of Meaford and TC Energy and provincial authorities. Thank you.
Councillor Burnell, are you okay with that?
No, I'm not, because we, we are not, it's not our project, it's not in our municipality, it's just affecting the Georgian Bay, so I think, just want to just focus on that, that we're objecting to this project, that we, we want to, so I'm not quite sure why this is morphing to, to whatever it is, like, I just want to include whatever First Nations are involved into the second last paragraph, so that we send our motion, that we are not even a player at, at the table, just to show everybody our stance on it. Regardless if, if the second last paragraph or the third last paragraph, TC Energy and municipality of Meaford are the two main players, they're the signatories on it. If they want to include whoever, that's up to them, not us. So that's why I just want to include them in the second last paragraph, not the third last paragraph. Thank you.
Okay, well, first of all, there's more, you brought this forward, so don't complain about morphing it, because you're the one that brought it up, but I'm, I'm, I still don't agree with it, I think that they own land there, so they should be included. CAOLM?
Through you, to council, the province of Ontario press release says the Ontario government is advancing pre-development work for the proposed Ontario Pump Storage Project developed in partnership by TC Energy and the Soggy and Ajibwe Nation. So they're actually the partnership?
Yes.
That's on the project. Meaford is the host location of the project.
Okay, thanks, CAOLM.
Thank you, CAOLM, if we can include that, please, thank you.
I believe council is, agreement to put it in?
You said that there's no economic impact, this year? This is maybe a question. Okay, sure, so one, one zero value?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, the motion, amended, updated motion is by Councillor Burnell, seconded by Councillor Walma. Okay, we've been through this before, we'll go through this again. Whereas the township of Tiny recognizes the importance of developing reliable, sustainable energy infrastructure for the province of Ontario, and acknowledges that energy projects of this scale may have significant environmental, economic, and social implications for our region, particularly for Georgian Bay and surrounding ecosystems. And whereas the proposed TC Energy Ontario Pump Storage Project is located within the municipality of Meaford, the township of Tiny is committed to ensuring that interests of our residents and the health of Georgian Bay are fully considered. And whereas the independent electricity systems operator, also known as IESO, is twice recommended to the Ministry of Energy that this pump storage project would not reduce electricity costs and would have no economic value to Ontario ratepayers. And whereas the IESO has authorized newer, more efficient, and less environmentally invasive technologies such as long-duration battery storage, as they not only take less property and time to build, they can be built at more locations closer to high-demand markets, reducing the need for long transmission corridors. And whereas the Department of Defence has warned of toxic contamination of Georgian Bay, where soil on the Fourth Division Training Centers... where soil on the fourth division training centers is disturbed by construction, and whereas some 30 endangered species will be put at risk should the project proceed, and whereas the Niagara Scarment is a UNESCO-designated geological formation deserving of protection, now therefore be resolved, the township of Taini council emphasizes the following principles. Environmental stewardship, the township of Taini is deeply concerned about potential irreversible impacts on our aquatic ecosystems, water quality, and species at risk in Georgian Bay. And any project of this magnitude must meet the highest standards of environmental assessment and protection. Two, transportation governance and consultation, we call for full transparency in the project approval process, including open communication with neighboring municipalities and local stakeholders. Public consultation and meaningful engagement with communities in the Georgian Bay region is, are essential. Three, regional collaboration, township of Taini encourages collaboration between municipalities, provincial authorities, and indigenous partners to ensure that any energy project reflects regional priorities, including environmental protection, economic sustainability, community wellbeing. Four, precautionary approach, given the uncertainties and potential ecological risks, the township of Taini advocates for precautionary approach. We support comprehensive independent studies and a thorough review process before any approvals or construction activities proceed. And the council reaffirms its commitment to representing the interests of our residents and protecting the national heritage of Georgian Bay and stands ready to engage constructively with TC Energy, the municipality of Miford, the Soggy Ajibwe Nation, and provincial authorities to ensure that energy development in our regions proceeds responsibly and sustainably, and that this resolution be forwarded to all municipalities in the Georgian Bay basin, the IESO, the Department of National Defence, Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, Ministry of Fisheries and Oceans, Simcoe North Member of Parliament, Simcoe North Member of Provincial Parliament, Canadian Coast Guard, the Great Lakes St Lawrence Cities Initiative, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario to request their cooperation in preventing this project from proceeding, and that the correspondence from the Severnstown Environmental Association dated September 9th, 2025 regarding the TC Energy pump storage proposal be included in the submission. Any further discussion, counsel? Hold on, favor? Thank you very much. Carry unanimously. Okay. Moving on to item M, matters of consideration, Clerk's report CRW-02225, which is with regards to a 2025 fee schedule bylaw amendment with regarding short-term rental application fees. CAO, who would like to, deputy CAO, sorry? Madam Clerk.
Thank you. As outlined in the report, the proposed fee bylaw amendment is to reflect actual costs of delivering the program and reflect the administrative burden associated with new applications versus renewal applications. So the intention is that the new fees would come into effect January 1st. So applicants applying before the end of year this year would still both have the, new and renewal would both have the $1,750 charge, but effective January 2026, the new application fees would be increased to the $2,000. This is being brought forward, it's time-sensitive as it has budget implications.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Comments, questions, counsel, starting with councillor Loca?
Yes. Well, everybody knows how I feel about short-term rentals, and I would not, I would not support this new application fee. If you're going to charge one person $1,750, I think that fee should apply to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Loca. Councillor Ollman?
I'm supportive of the change. The idea is that the cost is supposed to be neutral, we're not making money off of this, we're funding the cost so that the taxpayers are not. So if that is the analysis to make this program run, like net zero, I'm supportive of that. Just out of curiosity, because I, we're here, I've been seeing some claims of underfunding and use of reserves. Someone said as much as a million dollars in reserves to fund this program. So through you, Mayor Evans, just take the opportunity to clarify, has any money been, has a million dollars been used from reserves to fund this program? Director LeBlanc?
Deputy CAO?
Yep. Thank you for that question. I can tell you that no, a million dollars has not been used from our township reserves to fund the program. Just along with this, this report, I can add that we are working on the budget as we speak, and we have been looking at the costs. This increase in fees, we hope, will create the program to be neutral as it was intended to be. And with the fine revenue that we anticipate, there was a recent ruling, we do feel that at a very near future, we will see enough fine revenue to cover some of the deficit that the township has had to cover in the interim until, until this program was reevaluated for an indefinite year. It's been over a year now. We have some good analysis in place, and we are continuing to refine the budget even as early as last week. So by the time we come to council, you will see with this change, close to a revenue-neutral, cost-neutral budget.
Thank you. Follow-up, your worship.
Thank you. Please, councillor Ollman?
Thank you, through you. Could we, maybe to CAO Lamb, have, has the program been adjusted since we started this? I know that when we started, we had additional staffing, all that kind of stuff to, to deal with it. Have we scaled it based on, I guess, need and cost?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
CAO?
Yes. From, so once we got into the second year, and there was a difference between the number of applications, so to remind council and the public, very first year, we had, I believe it was 286 official applicants last year, when that number came in at 150, even, 156 approximately, even before that had happened, we had scaled back and eliminated two of our contract positions, and then morphed some of this work into some of the existing staff. They then, starting kind of midway through last year and all this year, then tracked their actual time spent on application review, inspections, and the rest of it, which has allowed us by the end of this year to come to the point, which you will see at council, where the program is designed 100% revenue-neutral, as it always was supposed to be. And most of the deficit that is in there has been the lack of fine revenue. So as we, as council will be, will remember pretty well, all of the fines that we had levied while the court cases were going on, were put in abeyance at the agreement of everyone until the courts had ruled. We are anticipating that even though there is now an appeal of our first victory, council will recall, we did, we did receive an award, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but approximately $40,000, give or take. I don't have, like I said, I don't have the exact number in front of me, and I apologize for that, was awarded by the courts to help recover some of our legal costs that would be paid back into the reserve that we borrowed as we worked our way through it, plus all the additional fine revenue. And to give you an example of what that could look like, is we did have a resolution in court of a matter just a week ago, and at the end of it all, just on one file alone, it was $6,000 worth of fine revenue associated off of one file to the municipality for operating without license, advertising without license, and a whole number of other ones. So we anticipate that by the time we get, after the court case is completed next year, that this program will be exactly as it was intended to be, along with the program paying for itself, any fine revenue also then going back and being revenue-neutral. So we will have those numbers in front of council when we have our budget meeting, dealing with this, I think it will be around December 1st.
Councillor Ollman?
Your worship, I think your worship appreciates staff keeping us on budget and cost-neutral. Thank you.
Councillor Burnell?
Great, thank you. Just to follow up with councillor Ollman, through you, Chair, to director LeBlanc, has any reserves been used for this short-term rental accommodation licensing program?
Yes.
Deputy CAO?
Thank you for that question. As projected in budget and shown on the financial statements, we have borrowed from the township reserves to fund the program. At the end of 2024, the balance owing was about $130,000. But again, as we anticipate with the fine revenue and this increase in fees, and then bringing down some of our costs, we should be able to pay that back from the program over the next year or two.
Councillor Burnell?
Great, thank you very much. Second question, is it possible, through you, Chair, to director LeBlanc, is it possible to get simplified revenue-cost statement or an income-expense statement in accounting terms of the short-term rental accommodation licensing program? It just seems that at the budget time, it's, the numbers are kind of all over the place. I'd like to see one statement of the short-term rental accommodation licensing program so that we see exactly all the revenues that are coming in for 20, for 2024 and 2025, the expenses or the costs of the program, all just on one sheet or two sheets, but not include anything else. Just, is it possible to get a simplified revenue-cost statement for this program?
Deputy CAO?
Yep. Through you, Mayor Evans, to councillor Burnell, absolutely. We do provide a quarterly report that does break down the expenses and the revenue and anything, any anomalies that we are seeing. But certainly, if council wants to have that information, we can produce that. At budget time, it is at a snapshot, the actuals that are being displayed. It's not for the, obviously, the rest of the year because we haven't seen that. It's usually an estimate, fast-forwarding, but we do provide our projections on what the reserve's going to look like and those kinds of things. So definitely, we can put together a report, especially for 2024, now that the year-end is over. But yeah, if council would like that, we can do that.
Councillor Burnell?
Great, I think you had, I'd like that. Yes, please, thank you very much.
And just again, a reminder, with the court challenge that went on, the anomaly in the projections versus actual is all of the fine revenue that was anticipated, plus obviously the costs of us successfully defending our, our license program. So it is, it will, we'll be able to provide all that information, and, but obviously, the revenue side hasn't been what we anticipated based upon the very fact that the courts have put all of those fines in, in hold at the agreement of all the parties until the actual court cases ran their way, except for those that volunteered to plead guilty to the charges.
Okay. Thank you, CAO. Councillor Loca?
So the thing that worries me is that by increasing the new application fee, it may send more short-term rentals underground where they won't, I was just wondering, CAO Lamb, if you could add some?
We actually don't anticipate that will be the case at all. The, the goal actually is to provide all those that are currently licensed to get the renewal in for next year. If council remembers the program, you're not allowed to start advertising for rentals until you have a license in hand. So anybody as of January 1st who hasn't got their renewal done, they technically, legally not allowed to advertise and start taking bookings for next year. So we're trying to provide an incentive for them to, to pay. There is also part of the program of getting them to do full compliance. So what, what we are also morphing out of was previously, in order to try to get the process rolling, we would give what we'd call tentative approvals, we were waiting for potentially a final inspection, but we allowed them to start advertising. We're also stopping that. If they don't want to, to do the final set of inspections, I know the fire department was having great trouble with people who would, would not actually schedule the last part of getting the license, and they would hold off on it because why would I have already got my license? I can do the advertising, I'm not going to worry about it. So then spent a lot of staff time chasing and re-chasing those that were not fully in compliance. So that behavior, that we are stopping. So until all aspects of it are done, we don't consider you to be fully approved. And it also provides an incentive for this year that anybody is now looking at getting into it next year will actually say, well, there is actually a $250 incentive for me to do the application now, rather than to wait next year. And it also is an incentive for anybody who is currently a licensed property to say, I need to get my renewal in now because if I don't, technically, my license has now lapsed, and it's a $2,000 fee rather than a $1,750, which it currently is. So we actually see it as hopefully an incentive to actually get more of them in earlier, and also an incentive to, as some new ones, to, rather than continuing to wait and don't do it till February or March or April, because it is the new applications that are very labor-intensive as we go through the process of getting them in compliance.
Thank you, CAO. Councillor Loca, please.
So in a perfect world, if, if our applications increase, is it possible, moving forward, that in future years, we could actually reduce the fee to maintain zero cost to the taxpayer?
Absolutely. We, that's why we have transitioned to true costing. We've asked everybody associated with the program to actually track real hours. And one of the, one of the benefits that we've seen, especially this year, and on the bylaw enforcement side, is once again, the number of active complaints is coming down. And as those come down, then we're not having to charge as many bylaw officers into actually investigating those complaints. That's what, part of what drives up costs. We've actually, you'll see at budget time, we will be able to eliminate, I believe it's two summer bylaw positions that were directly associated with, with enforcement of this. We have been looking at our needs analysis for next year, we feel comfortable to remove them from the complement. So we're continuing to right-size the program, and if we had more people that were licensed applicants, every year, we will come in front of council with the report, and if the numbers say we can drop it to 1,500, we can drop it to 1,300, absolutely. This is, this is solely designed as a program that the rest of the taxpayers should not be subsidizing somebody's ability to make revenue off of their residential property.
Thank you very much. That clears it up for me. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Councillor Ollman?
Thank you, your worship. And I just wanted to reiterate that the only reason why we haven't come back and had that discussion about changing, or, I don't know, but the word is negotiating adjustments to the bylaw. Like, I'd be interested in having a discussion on number of days, all that kind of stuff. However, we're stuck because of the court appeals. So to me, this is a cost that just gets brought back to the person renting the Airbnb. When it was $1,750, it's $1,902 a night, based on the, the 92 days with the $2,000, that cost borne back to the person renting is $21. So I'm, I'm supportive, and I hope we can get to a spot soon where we can sit down and look at the criteria of the bylaw. Thank you.
Councillor Burnell?
Thank you, Chair. This question for council, I guess, as, or maybe CAO Lamb, sorry. As this has come to regular council at this time, which would be in effect for January 1st of 2026, would it be possible to reconsider budgetary deliberations, what we're having early December, and bring this forth when we have more information about the cost that we need to be recovered from this program and have, have a, bring it back to the December 10th, our last council meeting of 2025, to ratify at that time? Would that be possible?
Well, we'd change that because we wouldn't be able to have too many days to take advantage of that.
Well, I can answer that question. One of the reasons why I'm here today, through you, Mr. Chair, is that we are now ready to send out the renewal notices, and we need to be able to tell people what that fee amount would be. And so we are, we've only, we, we do the budget calculations the best we can, as you know, they are, they are monthly processes. But the reality is, is it's not until you're kind of into the last quarter that you can get a true understanding. So we've now been able to capture all of the summer's costs associated with it, based upon, as close to real budgeting time as we can. So rather than making a projection in, in August, based upon numbers that would have only been valid till June, we're coming, we're coming to you with the best numbers we have that literally have been calculated as of a week ago, and realizing, you know, we, and council can choose to leave it as it is, we're just thinking that this is a way to provide people to get their renewals done sooner, and to, to reward those that are, the good ones that are continually, have been getting their licenses and renewing their licenses, to get that done, work done earlier, and a little bit of an incentive penalty or late penalty for those that are choosing to, to not do it until later on in the year.
Further comments? Councillor Burnell?
So, hold on, I just need to bring it back up here again. Now, the, the report states that the $2,000 fee would be for returning, sorry, and new.
New or expired.
So why, why, so if it's for new, why not just charge the new people $1,750 instead of charging $2,000? There's no incentive for them to apply earlier or not, they're new.
The, as I said earlier, the incentive is, if you get your application in now, you're going to pay $1,750 versus paying $2,000 afterwards. That allows our staff to get working on the process. That allows our staff to get working on the process, and new application takes us, in some cases, some of them can take as much as two months to get processed because we're continually waiting for the information from the applicants because they're, I think, if memory serves me right, we are, have a, a compliance of about 10% of every application being 100% complete. So we're constantly chasing missing information and inspection dates and the rest of it. So the concept is, is, as I outlined earlier, it's $1,750. The counsel can choose to leave it as the same fee for everybody, no matter what, when. The, the, the thing that it does now for our bylaw is that anybody who had an existing license that expires and haven't yet renewed it, if they are actually advertising that short-term rental as of January 1, they are no longer in compliance with the licensing bylaw and can be charged. We're trying to help do whatever we can to mitigate that so that we can get as many people that are looking at renewing to get renewed, and so that they don't have to worry about taking down advertisements and the rest of it because they are in compliance.
Counselor Brunel?
Thank you. So yeah, I, I have a little, I agree with Counselor Holoka on this one a little bit here because I, okay, for the one who are, who are, want to renew, and so to prevent them from, to let it expire and reapply at the $1,750, okay, I see, I see that point. But what about someone brand-new to the program wants to, wants to, so you're saying that, well, apply before December 31st so that you'll only, you'll only pay $1,750? So for the new, brand-new applicant?
That, that is correct. And then we are starting to work on that application at the beginning, and, and the revenue, we can, we can understand then what the revenue is going to be in. So if somebody doesn't apply till May, and we're not, we're not aware that they're going to apply, like, it, it's all about when the revenue comes in. We are incurring, we incur costs on the program from day one of each year, and so it's nice to have the revenue in. So if you can get as many people to reapply and renew ahead of time, it's just better business.
Counselor Brunel?
Final, final point here pretty well, pretty well. So I'd be in favor of, of expired applications, like, meaning that, okay, if you, if you have our current short-term rental, if you're part of the program now, please, so there's an incentive for you to re, to reapply before December 31st. But for the brand-new, people are still deciding, are we going to do it or not? You know, it'd be nice to have the, to them make the decision before 30, December 31st, but I think we, this is, we're going into November, they're not giving much heads up for people to kind of, if they even know about it, to say, well, in, in April, we didn't know about the, the higher fee. Well, yes, we would have done it before the summer 31st, but now it's $250 more because I'm applying a brand-new for the, for, as a, as a person who just haven't made a decision. To me, it's more of a penalty than an incentive for the new people. So, that's my.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Brunel. Any further discussion? Yeah, in my mind, costs are going up, so if you get your money in, you get in before end of December, you get $1,750. If you don't, then you pay $2,000, and it's a cost-neutral program. So, you know, there we are. Any further discussion? Move in a seconder, please? Counselor Womah? Seconded, Deputy Mayor. Motion is the Clerk's report, CR-022-25, regarding a proposed fee schedule bylaw amendment be received, and that proposed bylaw 25-060 passed and enacted this 29th day of October 2025 due to 2026 budget implications. All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried. Okay. Gentlemen, everybody, any new business at this time? Shouldn't be. But anyways, any notices of motion for our next committee of the whole meeting? Seeing none at this time. We don't have any bylaws at this point, so we'll move into confirmatory bylaw. Move by Deputy Mayor. Seconded by Counselor Holoka. Motion is the proposed bylaw 25-061 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of counsel be passed and enacted this 29th day of October 2025. Those in favor? Thank you very much. Motion's carried. We'll move on to adjournment at 3:42 PM. Move by Counselor Brunel. Seconded by Counselor Womah. Meeting adjourns at 3:42 PM. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Regular media council is now closed. Wish everybody a happy Halloween, say happy and safe and tasteful Halloween weekend. Thank you very much. We'll take a brief 10-minute break. Why don't we come back a little bit before 4 o'clock for the committee of the hall with Counselor Holoka at the controls? Thank you.